Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the Lorraine County Commissioners' Organizational Meeting, January 13th, 2014, 9:30 a.m. Good to be back, guys. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, elect the President of the Board for the year 2014.
I would like to make a motion to reelect Ted Kahlo as our President of the Board.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, last year I was skipped over. I would like to actually have the opportunity to serve as President this year. I would ask that you withdraw your motion.
Well, I think Ted's done an outstanding job as President for this past year, and that's why I asked to reelect him again this year. As President, you have to be able to communicate with your fellow Commissioners, and just for instance, like Facebook is like our new way of communicating in a lot of different ways, social media and things like that, and you know, we were Facebook friends when we first started, and like within a very short amount of time, you unfriended us on Facebook, so you don't want to... We have to be able to communicate, and I don't think that you do what you need to do to be President, to communicate with us.
Well, the reason for I was actually getting personal attacks from individual family members of yours...
Mine?
Well, this Board, and I ended up removing it. Because I wanted... Facebook, I just talk about my views on things and where I stand on the issues, and having individuals come in and make comments that offended a lot of people, were personal attacks, and it's my own page, I share things about my family on there. I share things about what's going on in county, what I'm doing. That was the reason for it, but that was in December of 2012 when that occurred, but...
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
But just, for instance, another thing is like...
But I do communicate things with Jim Cortez on where I stand. I try to let him know where I... what the positions that I'm going to be taking, because I know he communicates to all of us through the week and that. And you know, I send you text messages as well, letting you know things that are coming up, or if I'm getting called with questions and that, so...
There's been, I could probably count on one hand, the amount of times that you've either called or texted me throughout the year. Every week, it seems like you bring up a new... you kind of just throw things out at us at our meetings that we're not prepared to handle or to talk about, because we don't know what's coming, and kind of like blindsides us with stuff. And a President needs to be more communicative, I think, and be able to get along and be the popular Commissioner. That's how you become President.
Well, I go through, I bring up things at the Board meeting, because that's what we're supposed to do, and I always tell you, you know what, I'm not... don't want to expect an answer from you this week. Go through, you can have the information, and then we can talk about it later. I've done that with information as far as, you know, when we're looking at doing the live video streaming.
Right.
Telling you, hey, this is what we could do, look into it, here's the information, and get back to me, and that. You know, the previous Boards, even when Mary Jo and Betty Blair were here, they allowed David Moore to be President, and it's been a long tradition of it, and...
Well, I know some Boards elect them for, you know, four-year terms, but they don't, so... And I enjoy being President, I appreciate... I thought I'd nominate Commissioner Koczyk this year, and she asked me if I'd like to serve again, and I...
Yeah, normally it would be my turn, well, not my turn, but Vice President usually moves up to President, but I would relinquish that and ask that Ted be President again, so... My motion stands.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
No. And you know, I'm not going to let this go. I understand you guys have... You take your orders from Jaredini and that, so...
Not on a bet, Mr. Williams. Not on a bet. Madam Clerk?
So far from the truth.
Elect the Vice President of the Board for the year 2014.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Koczyk for the Vice President of the Board.
I'll second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Adopt proper rules as parliamentary procedures we followed at all Board meetings during 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Provide each Wednesday of each month at 9:30 a.m. as regular Board meetings for year 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Providing the first or third Tuesday of each month at 9:30 as regular Board meetings for 2014 for public hearings.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Authorizing the President of the Board or the County Administrator, whichever is available, to sign documents, contracts, official correspondence, grant applications that prior Board approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This is new, Sandy called about this. Just to kind of streamline our processes, it's hopefully going to make things a little quicker and easier, having Mr. Cortez the opportunity to sign some of these documents after we approve them.
Recognizing that they'll be...
We were already approved.
They're already approved, so they're not coming back and forth.
Right.
Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Appointing Commissioners 911 Review Board Chairman for year 2014 of various members.
I'd like to appoint Commissioner Koczyk, she's been long-serving on that Board.
I appreciate that, thank you. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams? Aye.
Point the President to Lorraine County Data Processing Board, Audit Review Board, Records Commission, Solid Waste, Management Policy Committee, Board of Revisions or Alternate, County Children's Family Counselor, Does Need Safety Committee, or Doesn't Need...
So moved.
Second. What do we do about the Board of Revision? Who's going to be our person sitting in on that?
By committee?
Well, it has been by committee. I'll get somebody for you. We, right now, I believe we've been sending Virginia Haynes down there to do that. We kind of move it around a bit. I'll figure somebody for you, and I take the seat on Children and Family First Council for you, so that one's taken off. I just can't do the Board of Revision because of the amount of time that needs to be dedicated.
Almost takes a full-time employee when it gets busy down there.
At times, I, you know, the last couple of years, there's been a lot of requests for reevaluations, and they've had their hands full down there. Where, I believe the Orders Department has somebody that they hire to do that.
Right.
I'm not sure how, I think the Treasurer's Office, I'm not sure how they handle it. I think there's somebody from the Treasurer's Office on that. But I'll get you a candidate that's able to understand the function of the work, and I'll let you know who that is.
Wonderful.
Thanks. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
I'm assuming there's corporation transfers, nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing for all three of them?
There are requisitions in bills, but there are no...
Right, but nothing for budgets?
Correct.
So no for 11, 12, 13. Requisitions?
Aye.
So moved.
Yeah, so moved, I'm sorry.
How long you been President?
I'm trying not to cough again.
So moved.
What you talking about?
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you. I do have a couple of personnel actions at 911, Solid Waste, and possible Board appointments, so I also want to update you on the execution of the labor contract that we recently passed with United Auto Workers and Children's Services, excuse me, Job and Family Services, and potential sale or purchase of real estate. All of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine War for executive session talks, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into exec session and we discuss those items that I've outlined. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes of December 18, 2013, and January 8, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Men Resolution 13993 adopted December 18, 2013, the annual appropriation of special revenue. The amendment is to reflect upon 3441 Criminal Justice Services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Approve payment for Victims of Domestic Violence Fund to Lorraine County Safe Harbor Inc., DBA Genesis House for the amount of $28,760.50 as collected by Lorraine County for the period July 1, 2013 through December 31, 2013. Collection and payment are pursuant to the Ohio Revise Code, Sections 2303.201 and 3113.34-39.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Establish compensation for Law Directors prosecuting violations of state law in municipal courts, Ohio Revise Code 1901.34C for the year 2014. Lorraine, Illyria, Overland, 7,500; North Bridgeville, Amherst, 5,625; Avon Lake, Avon, Sheffield Village, Sheffield Lake, 3,750; South Amherst, Wellington, 1,500; and Kipton, Rochester, Grafton, Vermeil, and La Grange, 7,150.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Creating a fire and damper inspection program for the purpose of ensuring all fire and smoke dampers in county-owned buildings are in working order to prevent the spread of fire and smoke inside walls and floors. Testing and inspections shall be completed and monitored for four years.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cortez, thank you for getting this all together, looking it up. It should do a nice job on keeping our buildings safe, especially in light of how we haven't been doing a lot of the large capital stuff this will take care of.
Well, it's pretty important. If the dampers aren't functioning right, you have uncontrolled spreading of fire through your ducting system. Hopefully, we won't find too much that hasn't been maintained. Some of these are under maintenance contracts, some are not, some we're not even aware of. So this will be a good time to get organized on this.
Give Karen Davis something else to work on.
As if she needs something else. Well, you know what, she's on a terrific job over the year. I'm very impressed. She's...
And who recommended her for the job?
Pat him on the back, Tom. Tom, reach over and pat him on the back, would you?
Well, let's say, you do have a pretty good eye-free talent, so...
Well, you know, Karen and I have been together a long time, and we put up a lot of buildings together, too, went through project management, so it's a nice, comfortable fit where we're at right now. So I appreciate you saying so.
Yeah, well, I'm hearing good things from the employees, or heard direct reports, too, so I just hope so in that position.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Under 911, approve areas MOUs with political subdivisions to include the cities of Amherst, Avon, Avon Lake, Illyria, Lorraine, North Bridgeville, Overland, Sheffield Lake, and the villages of Kipton, La Grange, Sheffield, South Amherst, and Wellington. To enter an agreement with New World Systems to install updated computer-aided dispatch, record management system, mobile computing platform, and all other software and hardware for use by the County 911 to better accommodate services for those users who access the County 911 system for emergency services calls. The County will incur the cost of installation, but continuing maintenance will be shared by the users.
So moved.
Second.
Can I add one thing to this, please? I just want to modify the resolution a little bit to include any other political subdivision that wishes to come on board. I don't think we have them all that have the ability to be on board. These are the ones that have recently shown interest in working with us, but I do believe that over the course of the next year, we'll probably gain the interest of everyone that has either the fire or the police and is able to work through that records management data system.
All right, let's not exclude anybody, let's make it inclusive.
And I apologize for the clerk, I didn't catch that we maybe not have complete... These are just the ones right now that are active with us. I'm really happy about how this is going, and we need to journalize this, because the city of Lorraine did theirs, and they're just looking for a finished copy. Looking back, we've had a lot of discussion on it, but we have not, by resolution, journalized our agreement with them. So this will be the final piece, and it's going to be a year of a lot of work with 911 and these outside activities, and there's just a lot more to come after this, as I promised you. Mid last year, there's going to be a lot more collaborative resources and efforts being put into 911 over the course of the year. You're going to have your hands full on that Board, Commissioner Koczyk, so...
Yeah, I see that.
There's a lot to come. I'm very pleased that all the communities coming together on this, but it is a multimillion-dollar undertaking, just like last year, we spent about a million and a half improving the communications capability around Lorraine County, so that we got rid of a lot of those dead spots. After the FCC narrow-banded everything, we had so many places where it was very dangerous for our safety forces to be in, because the communication corridors were not working well, and we put quite a bit of money into that, and with the Sheriff's Department working with us and identifying those areas that needed improvement. We're still working on that this year, so all in all, it continues to get better, and people continue to want to engage more fully. The more we do together, the more we want to do together.
I have a question. How do we address Vermillion's needs in that, with the Vermillion population side on the western side, and the business of moving the other side with Erie County side?
Well, I actually think Vermillion should just annex into Lorraine County, be done with it.
I would agree with that, that would be fine.
I don't think they've changed the county board, though, in over 100-something years. I'm really not sure. Possibly the Sheriff could speak to that better. I don't really know what they do now.
I just, as I was going through them, the communities, I'm saying, where's... How do we address Vermillion's issue? Because it's the only city that's split in our county, but we have a heavy residential side, and the 911's addressed through the levee. How do we address working with that community?
Well, it's going to be an interesting discussion.
I'm sorry I sat here in thought, man.
We haven't really had that discussion yet. With regard to that, clearly, we can't, we cannot give them everything that we've provided to, you know, the people in Lorraine County, the jurisdiction of Lorraine County, because of the taxing base.
Right.
But there may be some bifurcated process that we can do with them, I just don't know.
Sheriff, are you familiar with... Can I borrow you for a couple of minutes?
Yeah.
Somebody asked me this question somewhere through the Christmas holiday, or from Vermillion, they saw what we were doing, and I don't remember if it was a Vermillion Safety Officer or something, and I said, "I don't know, I'll ask the question."
Yeah, and like the County Administrator said, half and half, you know, half's in Erie County, half's in Lorraine County, and that's the problem with the courts, too. Their officers deal with Erie County Court, and they also deal with Lorraine County Court, depending on, you know, the break is right around where the shopping center complex is. I don't know if conversation with the mayor over there, I don't know if that's something they'd have to put up to a vote.
Something we can address through the 911 committee or something, yourself, County Administrator, I mean, that's a...
Yeah.
Especially in regards to records management, how do you work both sides? And again, I'm sure you've got a great relationship with the Sheriff in Erie County.
Yes, Paul Siggsworth. It would be nice to think that somewhere in the next decade or less, that what we're doing in Lorraine County to connect everybody, each county would be connected the same way. As it is, you know, used to be, well, it still is, but it won't be when we're finished here, that information in Avon Lake wasn't making it out to Kipton, or vice versa. Well, we'll be interconnected within our community, but you may be over in Vermillion, and you may not be in that information stream, and they're just as close, or if not closer, to Avon Lake than Kipton is. I will talk to the Chief over there, Chris Hartung, I mean, I've got a good relationship with him, with the Chiefs Association, so I can at least ask that question to him, and maybe he can check with his mayor to see what we can work on with that.
Okay, I just say, it's a portion, it's a large residential portion.
Now, mindful, while we're on dialogue, we still have an issue with software for the Civil Department that we have to work out this year, and we're going to have to figure a way of doing that, because it's going to be costly, but we need to upgrade the civil... Yes. I haven't forgotten. We've had a lot of conversations with the Administrator, and he's right, because they tie into everything that we do through the courts, through the police, everything else, so they really need to be tied into that system. So I'm going to be looking for some kind of partnership on that level. A lot of it has to do with the 911 software, but we're going to need a little bit of general fund money to make it, you know, a proper use of the funds, but we really do need to take... There's a menagerie of different programming over there, it needs to be consolidated. It's a perfect time with the New World, because New World has a program and a module that they can write for the Civil Office, right? Correct. If I understood the conversations correctly. So we're going to be looking at that while we start the implementation at the jail, the Sheriff's Department, these other jurisdictions. There's a lot, lots has been done, and there's still even more to accomplish.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Well, we're purchasing the software, but the maintenance of that software is going to be split 50/50 between the county and the subdivision.
Here's what our MOUs require. You're right, we are paying for the software, as you know. I had a breakdown, and then bring it with me, through negotiations, we were able to shave a significant amount of money off of that initial proposal that we received. One of the good things is we received some credit, because Lorraine and Illyria were already on that type of software, so we were able to get them to give us credits for things that were already in place to lower the overall cost for the community. Maintenance is always an ongoing issue. You can usually afford the one-time expense of an item, but the maintenance contracts will slowly drain the blood out of you.
Right.
So we have agreed to take 50% of the maintenance for the county, and then the other 50% will be shared throughout the community. The more people that come on, the lower the cost for each community. That's an incentive for jurisdictions to continue to involve themselves. Overall, we'll be able to reduce costs to a very manageable level. We were the biggest user, and then the Sheriff's Department and the jail was a big user, so it was felt that 50% was reasonable for the county. The other piece is they have to stay engaged for 10 years. They have to agree to be committed to the software and the maintenance upkeep for about 10 years, and that's usually a platform's life. Most software companies will support software platforms for about 10 years, and we have a guarantee from New World to do that, so that we don't have obsolescence in year five and six and be starting all over again. I would hope the software takes us past that with continued upgrades, but usually companies won't commit themselves that far out. So, you know, the MOUs are out there right now, they went out to some of the jurisdictions, we've been slowly feeding them into the areas, and I anticipate them coming back over the next month or two or three as we implement. And of course, we still have to look at New World software with regard to the fire departments. They're on Firehouse right now. Firehouse can read into New World, but New World has an upgraded module that, you know, the fire chiefs would like us to take a look at. I want to make sure that the costs that we've put into Firehouse, which is something they wanted just a couple of years ago, aren't wasted, and we moved to a completely new platform just because it's a little bit nicer. So I'm working on that, that'll be something I'll bring back later in the year. I'll be meeting with the mutual aid folks again to talk about that probably later this month.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Do you want to amend your... to include all that?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Approving enter service agreement with digital data technologies in Columbus, the amount of $634,870 for GIS, GPS, road center line, and addressing projects, State Water and Rivers, County 449,500, which was based on Resolution 13477, adopted May 15, 2013, and annual maintenance is $33,000 to be paid from professional services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cortez?
Well, you were... We were giving various presentations on this over the last year or two. We're one of the last counties to move to this. We got a little bit of extra money, you can see there's a lot of money coming from outside the community. I want to thank the Orders Office, they'll be working with us on that project, and of course, my biggest fear is the updates to the underlying data. The confidence level is only there if you do updates, so the maintenance cost is going to be considerable, but without this, 911 really doesn't have the best data available. A, to know where the callers are coming from more fully, which has gotten much better with the triangulation, but secondly, the resources that are available to firefighters and safety forces when they're at someplace in the county. This is going to map different layers of resources that we don't have right now. And I'm also hoping it's a lot better, because there's times when our screens are showing that a safety officer is someplace where they're not really there. Everybody thinks GPS is so perfect, and the mapping is so perfect today. It's close, but it can be better.
They have a lot of information that needs to be submitted to get this right. Who's doing all that?
Well, it's all this work that's going to be done.
Who's doing it?
The company here, isn't it?
But we have to submit, like, maps, and I mean, all kinds of documentation to get this right.
Oh, yeah. The GIS Department down in the Orders Office is going to be, you know, lead on this, and I think they're going to have their hands full.
I just had a thought, you know, on cellphones now, you could turn your GPS on and off. If you turn your GPS off, and you call 911, will they not know where you're at?
They will, because we... They will, because we, the signal is, comes through our equipment, is actually, if we can get a triangulation on it, they'll pinpoint you fairly well. I don't know that we're using your GPS on your phone right now in our technology. We're bouncing it off various towers to get across. Commissioner, do you smile? Why don't you take it?
No, I was just thinking of the IRS.
The IRS?
The Obama's.
Oh, okay. All right.
But no, with that, you're right. They bounce it off the cellphone towers, and they're able to go through and get you a location within, I think it's five hundred yards.
It may even be closer now than it was before. It's getting better and better.
I just didn't know if you turn that GPS option on and off, if that made a difference.
I don't, no, not to us. Again, we used the signal triangulation, not the actual GPS on the phone.
Yeah, I think the GPS one, you actually have to go through your phone provider in order to get it. I have it on my kids' cellphones because I can actually track them exactly where they're at. But I think law enforcement, sheriff probably could answer this better, that you actually have to go through the provider to get that. They use the cellphone towers in order to pinpoint where they're located.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under solid waste per contract with Liberty Tire Services of Ohio LLC Menorah for operation scrap tire collection program. This was the only proposal received to be paid from the scrap tire fund account and had options for renewal in fifteen and six hundred and price per county remaining the same as past three years.
Mr. Bailey?
Bright green tie today.
Good morning, Commissioner. She liked that.
Attorney engineer with that green.
We have here a new contract with Liberty Tire. We did go out for proposals. We circulated the first time. I had to reject all proposals because people forgot bid bonds and showed up late. So, we went around the second time. We did come back with one proposal, Liberty Tire, current contractor. This is the same price for the next three years he's proposing. Of course, we institute one-year contract with renewals and as we've had the past three years. So, that's good. And it's an eight-dollar a ton reduction on the ag tires per ton, but we don't, that's not a large cost savings. That's maybe five hundred dollars a year. All right?
Wonderful. Thank you.
I've asked you this multiple times, but I still get the same question from our farmers. And for the tire pickup, why do you always do it during harvest season? Could you just explain that for people?
Sure. Well, it's the grant cycle that's given to us by high EPA. They don't give us a grant, and they don't sign the contract till July first, and then you can start spending money. You can't spend money one day before July first, and then we start doing the advertising and all that. And we have to have like a two, three-month window to get everything set up. So, we end up as early as we can in a harvest season. Always try to do September.
Keith, is there any way to pre-do some of that?
We could, yes.
Gear it up to get it before?
Yes, we could.
The only thing you can't do on those type of grant funds is spend anything or do anything you're going to get reimbursed for, because they won't reimburse for prior work.
You got it. You got it.
They're pretty, they're pretty tight about that. So, anything that we're expecting to be assumed under the grant for a cost would have to occur the day after.
Right, right.
The grant was approved.
Right.
It's about the economics, Commissioner.
Do I understand the biennial budget in July first being the process of there's a way to streamline or work with the state legislature to move the process back and maybe do a double-year formula to let us start ahead of time on the collections for fall of two thousand and fourteen, so it wasn't fall?
How many ag tires did we take last year, Keith? You remember?
About forty-four ton, which is about six semi-loads, about twelve hundred.
On just ag tires?
Yeah.
And we collected them where?
At the collection center.
And one of the things that we've been working on is actually a possible second location.
Right, a southern.
Okay. And we've been so wildly successful with the collection center that we're looking at the potential for a more southern location. Now, that's going to remain a guarded secret to those areas that we've been looking at, but we're narrowing it down to some recommendations for the board. I think it would be hugely successful to have a second facility south. I think it's going to open up a whole new utilization base that we haven't seen before.
And we have a new map that was just generated on Friday, which shows our participation by zip code last year, and it'll be presented at Policy Committee meeting tomorrow, which is our initial kickoff for our replan. And it shows a huge void in the south, right? Dead center. All right?
Just to let you know, they love the, I've received positive feedback on that program. Their only complaint was.
Move it up.
Ordered to get the tires there, but they're very appreciative of it.
Well, hopefully, we'll make the drive a little bit shorter.
Yeah. And there'll be more time in the field and less time on the road.
Exactly.
Thank you. I'll move.
Second.
Anything further? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the engineer, cooperate with ODOT for the widening and reconstruction of point four-two miles of roadway on State Route two fifty-four Sheffield Township to construct a two-way left lane turn. Approach roads will be realigned and proposed storm serve will be constructed. There are various upgrades needed on county water system to include removal and replacement of forty feet of six-inch ductile iron-water main, extension adjustment of two fire hydrants, and adjustment of value, value and service boxes, and estimated cost nine thousand to be paid from sanitary other account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the sheriff, receive and filing a report in accordance with the Ohio Rose Code three twenty-five point thirty-one on the fees due and unpaid for more than one year prior to January first, two thousand and fourteen, in the amount of two million, three-hundred five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars, twenty-nine cents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Renew the dental service group with Dr. Tran effective January first, two thousand and fourteen through December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, with the renewal options at a rate of a hundred and three dollars per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorized donation of five older Dell laptops to Sheffield Township Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just want to thank the sheriff. The fire chief of Sheffield Township contacted me along with the Board of Trustees, asking for this to help him out. And I picked up the phone, make a call to his office. Sheriff responds absolutely. Very appreciative out there. I was out at the pancake breakfast. They were thanking you there, and I just want to thank you for being so responsive on this.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
Have no additional comments. Thank you.
Mr. Anis?
Commissioners, I have one matter pending litigation. I would just like to give you a short update in an executive session.
Commissioner's report.
Glad to be back. Two thousand and fourteen, hopefully we'll have a prosperous year. Things are seeming to look better as far as our income coming in from our sales tax and things of that nature. So, hopefully we'll have a good year. Dog licenses are due at the end of this month. It's January, so by the end of this month, please get your dog licenses. Still do the five-dollar fee for, the extra five dollars for the medical fund. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, nice to be back. NOAAAC met last week. I chaired the governing committee. We were meeting right through the holiday season, and we had our first board meeting on Friday. Went smooth. Commissioner Williams, it was a long day there. We had a lot of issues to go through. I was elected as the first vice president, so next year I'll serve as president of the board in NOAAAC, which I'm looking forward to. County Commissioners Association is getting quite active. I've got meetings on Thursday and Friday this week in Columbus. First on the Public Safety Committee I serve on. One of the issues is Representative Becker, I believe, has an issue coming before the House this year in regards to allowing all county employees with CCWs to carry their weapons in. So, that's coming. It's one of our discussions. I don't know if you and I serve on the same stuff, Sheriff, so one of those issues. Also, I've been meeting with Mr. Cordez, and as I spoke, I think, before at our last meeting in December, with the new filing deadline for getting issues on the ballot, I think we need to discuss the crime lab, which we've all had sort of dialogue through Jim on, that there needs some additional revenues there in regards to the old levy that has shrunk because of the reevaluations going on. The crime lab's extremely important to the prosecutor's office and everyone else, all the local police departments in regards to getting our stuff done, so we're not running into richfields for Bureau of Criminal Investigations. And then also talking about maybe putting a transit back on again. I think we keep going back, and I know you're going to be out on the twenty-ninth, so by the twenty-second, we can do this, which is our next regular board meeting.
I'll be prepared for having information for you to look at, and I'll try to have it out by the end of the week. The numbers at the crime lab are easier to digest. We have, over the last several years, increasing cost as everything has gone up. Due to the reevaluation, though, and having a permanent levy, the amount of money collected on the levy is decreasing. Not a good cycle to be in. Anybody can figure that out. Even maintaining standard operations require a certain amount of growth in revenue, and the growth has been stagnant now and for twenty years. And the need continues to increase for crime lab services. We discussed this briefly last year, but we felt that the two levies that we asked the, the, the community to visit last May were sufficient. We didn't want to overload that. We were successful in one, which was the drug task force levy. I'm grateful for, you know, the support the community gave that. We were unsuccessful on the transit levy. This year, I'm going to bring you information to suggest that we should put a crime lab levy on the ballot, and we should at least maintain those services, if not improve them slightly. We're going to be leaving the partnership we have with adult parole. They're moving in a different direction with their forensic lab to a much less costly process to test those samples.
For urine analysis.
For urine analysis. So, we're going to lose that partnership. It's been a good one, and it's helped hold costs down, but it's now become one that's not necessary anymore, which puts more cost onto the crime lab at a time when we have reduced revenues. We've also, in the past, used quite a few of the reserves to support the drug task force in the past for different initiatives. So, we've reduced the amount of funding that's available over time from about a million dollars to about three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars that we have in reserve on that account. It's hard to buy equipment and staff the equipment and buy the supplies with a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year. And that's about where we're going to be on revenue. So, we're going to be very challenged if we don't put a levy on, and I don't think it needs to be huge, but responsible enough that we can continue operations. If that fails, we're going to have to talk about the future of whether we're going to continue to have a crime lab. And of course, there's a lot of things going on right now that I'm waiting for, to work through with the courts. I had a conversation with Mr. Looby on Friday about where they were at with their changes that are structurally going to have us really need to sit down, decide what our staffing model is going to look like at that crime lab. But I'm waiting on the courts to do what they're doing over in adult probation right now. They figure another two or three weeks that they'll be working on that, and then we'll know something more completely at that time. The other levy is going to be for transit. I don't think we should ever stop. I'm sure people want to laugh at us. That's fine. I was reading the report the other day. Cuyahoga County got twenty-three million dollars in capital improvement for a few dollars in match money. We don't have the match money. We're not bringing the capital dollars here. We're not putting the rolling stock on the ground, and we're not putting infrastructure in place for decades to come for the community to have as a resource. We need to continue to try to improve transit. We've been very inventive in how we've done that. I will tell you that I got to do this. You know, the state needs to step to the table more fully in mass transit. State dollars are considered match dollars when it comes to the FTA dollars, and if the state would put more money back into these communities that it's taking out of these communities, specifically in transit and public mass transit of different kinds, we would have less need for local dollars to match federal dollars. I think the last report had us something like forty-fourth or thirty-seventh in the nation on the amount of dollars that are returned to public transportation by the state. That's not a good sign in Ohio, and it doesn't appear that they're really giving any attention to public transit systems and how to capitalize on getting federal dollars back into our community. Lorraine County continues to be a donor community when it comes to these type of funds with the federal government. We need to be more of a recipient community than a donor community.
As you said, Jim, our local residents are paying for transit just in other counties.
Absolutely. They're paying for transit all over the country, but they're not paying for it here.
Right.
Because we don't have the local investment to bring back the eighty percent that we could bring back from the federal government. So, it goes someplace else.
With the transit levy, we talked about possibly breaking into one, instead of one district, multiple districts. We know that there's a need for transit in the city of Lorraine, in the city of Illyria. We know the city of Oberlin supports it greatly, but creating these districts that could do it, and then the county basically offering a commuter from one district to the next.
It's not possible under a regional system.
Right.
Under a county system. In effect, each one of those communities would have to try to start their own transit system. We have to have, we looked at this last year. In fact, you and I went over to Vermillion, and we had quite a bit of conversation with folks from Erie. Under the regulations that exist right now, we would not be able to isolate it and still maintain the status that we have.
Right. We would have to basically appoint members to a board in order to do it. Say, the city of Lorraine wanted to join, or the city of Illyria, there would have to be a board, if I remembered the conversation correctly, in Vermillion.
Well, there could be, or they could start their own transit system.
Right. But we could actually have a large board that oversees the transit. It just wouldn't be a county-wide transit system.
You could try to go that way, certainly.
What I'm looking at, and I don't know what the board thinks about this, is we know the areas that are going to support it. We know the areas that need it. Asking the townships, asking villages and cities that don't use it and right now are having a hard time funding issues in their own communities to pay for transit, it's going to be difficult. Would you want to have them take a look and see what it would take to put this together, or first maybe even see if the cities such as Lorraine, Illyria, and Oberlin would be interested in doing?
Now, if we did separate that out, would those communities be able to access the federal money?
It would depend. It depends on how it's done. You can either be a county transit system or a regional transit system, but you can't be both at the same time. And that's where the problems lie. We're a county transit system, not a regional transit system. In order to go to a regional transit, a regional system, remember, some of our funding from the state would probably diminish because we wouldn't be considered the county system, and the support would be less for regional. And then you can incorporate geographical region, but you now have to balance the communities trying to get along with each other in order to provide that. And it would be, I think it's going to be somewhat challenging to do that, but not impossible.
Well, the cities in Sandusky basically does that. They're regional out there. The city is handling it, and it appears, and I know there's some questions I have and some that you have with that issue, but.
Yeah, they kind of stretch the definition of.
They definitely went into the gray area.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that that's wrong, but.
Well, they're making it work.
They are, and it seems that they have a better or more used system than what we have here in the county.
The, you know, I looked at what they had up there after we had that meeting with them, and they're piecing a lot of things together that we haven't done here, but we have a lot better rolling stock on the road, and we have a lot better routing than they do. What they've done is they've extended their regional, and I say regional with Sandusky. They've poked into some of the unincorporated areas trying to provide services. They've really stretched the definition of, you know, they're more a county system than a regional system, but since it's coming out of Sandusky, they're just running that ragged edge. You give them credit for trying to make it work. I don't want to be a detractor. But certainly, we can take a look at a regional approach, but it's going to, it's going to take a lot of, a lot of change to do that. And I'm not so sure that we're even, at the end of the day, going to be successful in that approach. I think we need to reinvent the cell. If I remember right, the last levy passed, I think.
Oberlin.
In Oberlin, and it was a slight defeat in the larger communities. The need for mass transit's there. We asked for quite, just a little bit of dollars that didn't allow us to provide a lot more services to other communities. I'm going to go back to Commissioner Williams' look a couple of years ago. I've gone to the parking rides, and I see where the parking ride's out on, by Columbia, out there, the big one, it's a huge one behind the restaurants back there, and the one on North Olmsted, right by the mall. There's a lot of Lorraine County vehicles in those parking rides. So, people are using mass transit. They're going and they're going to that parking ride, and they're taking that mass transit in. We either need to be connected to that, or we need to be able to provide that service. Now, we ran the commuter route downtown. We just couldn't build the rider shift because, it's not because the need isn't there. It's because we couldn't, we didn't have enough resources to make it convenient for people to do that. And unless we get the resources, we can't build that convenience. I believe people will use it if we could get enough convenience. Well, we were an hour apart on each run, and people either were getting there, you know, so early, or it was too late for them to use, and we weren't able to build that in. And I'm not going to ask you to do that again, or anything like that again, because people don't want door-to-door convenience, but they certainly need a more timely way of accessing public transportation. You know, Cuyahoga is prepared to work with us as a partner. We can, we can de-bus folks at their parking rides or at their stations, and they'll do transfer tickets with us. It's probably the way we need to be going, but we need to be able to put those buses on at a regular basis that people know they're going to get there and at convenient places. I will tell you, there's money out there for parking rides. There's money out there for capital improvements. There's money out there for rolling stock, and we're not getting any of that money because we don't have the ability to match it, number one, and number two, we're not rolling enough time, enough hours to qualify for it. We're still in the game, and we're still being fairly inventive on that, but we need to do something. And Commissioner, I'll look at, if you want to try to make this regional approach, but I think it may be very challenging for the way our community is sliced up right now to have something other than a county system.
I'm just looking at, I was out in Avon Lake. They're having some issues with their finances because of evaluation of property.
Right, the plant.
And they have levies that are going to be coming up. Other cities are having levies. Villages are having levies. Townships are having issues.
And the state's sitting on two and a half billion, Sheriff, that email you sent me?
Two billion.
But the issue comes back here in Lorraine County. These are the people that are going to fund it.
Correct.
And if we're going to go countywide, my concern is we're going to get a majority of no votes against it because they are looking at doing improvements in their communities that are going to benefit them directly. And we can go back and forth on the benefits of the transit, and I know that there is a need for it, but the individuals themselves are going to look at, how does this directly impact me? How does it benefit me? And I have a limited source of money.
Well, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner. We've never been in that disagreement. Sometimes, though, people have to look at their communities holistically and not as fractured little entities. And I think our job is to convince them that there is a need for a community approach to solve this problem. The smaller we make the community, the more divided we become. We need to make the community larger, not smaller.
And I don't disagree by a lot, and I don't think people look at it in that way. I think they just do a priority list.
It's an economic issue.
Yeah, I agree with you there, too. Well, I'll bring back some plans for you. I'm going to ask you to make the ask again, and I know people are going to say, well, we told you no this many times.
Yeah.
But maybe one time, they'll say yes.
You have to.
You can cast the first yes vote, Commissioner. I'll go down there with you, and we'll be in the lead for at least the first five minutes, maybe. But we need to continue to bring these issues forward. We need to continue to try to bring the money that's leaving Lorraine County back to Lorraine County. Or I'm going to go back to what Commissioner Kayla said. We got to repeat that. We're funding transit, but just not in Lorraine County.
Right.
Yeah, I see that in the backup.
Yes, you do, and you've been going there. We don't have to know. The money isn't coming here, is it?
Well, a lot of that's got to do with the votes, though. We're outvoted.
But even if we could win the vote, we don't have the money to match the funds, and we took a pass on a lot of, a lot of that. Now, we were successful last year at getting the FTA to leave us alone on the buses. We are rolling new stock right now. You know, they wanted all those buses back, and to be honest with you, I told them, they wanted them, they had to come break into the building and tow them out, and that's the only way they were getting them back. And that's the true story. So, I've gotten them to relent on that, and we depleted the rolling stock and put the new stock out there. But unless we have a replacement schedule for that rolling stock, it won't take long for the miles to build up on that stock. And right now, we're not queued for any rolling stock in the future because we don't have match money for it. So, those are things that we have to plan for, and we have to get some dollars, because we have to look three, three, four years out on that for capital improvements.
Under my report. Commissioner Williams?
Oh, wow. Forgot that we were actually in our individual reports.
Sorry.
No, great to be back. I want to hope everyone has a, had a great holiday. Great New Year so far, at least for myself and my family. Very reactive out in the community right now. And I swear, I was still in the Morning Journal. And I swear, I, I was telling the Morning Journal, I should have been carpooling with some of the reporters because every event I was at, they were at. Speak Up Lorain, a great event. I had the superintendent, Mr. Tucker, there. Just a terrific individual. Did a phenomenal job explaining what's going on in the city of Lorain with the schools there. And, you know, but graduated from King, and I have a lot of family members that are teachers or principals in the school system. So glad to see that he's got control over it and is actually doing everything in his power and the staff's power to improve the schools out there. Looking forward to good things to come out of there. Tended an event at the library, and they're going to be doing this, I believe it's the first Saturday of every month on Kwanzaa. And I got invited to it, and when I went there, I didn't know much about Kwanzaa, but it was very interesting. A great, learned a lot about it, what, what it means to a lot of people in Lorain County. And just want people to know about it. If you don't have any idea on it, please consider going out to Lorain City Library. They do a wonderful job with the presentations. Kelly Gunther, our Olympian speed skater, had a fundraiser on Saturday. Huge turnout there. Got to see a lot of township officials there supporting her. Want to wish her best of luck with the Winter Olympics coming up. And I know I'm missing a lot of other things that I've did, but looking forward to getting back and being at the different meetings. We have the Township Association meeting this Thursday. Hopefully you guys will be able to attend. And that's the end of my report.
Congratulations, Patty Echo, also, correct?
Pat, yes, and she became... Yes, she did. And very, I don't, I don't know what they're going to do about their parties now because she kind of oversaw those. She was the organizer for that, but a good group...
She multitasks very well.
She does. Patty, and then you have Amy Semania, that's the vice president out there. Amy Richards is the treasurer.
It's all girls. Women are rolling.
They are. Well, you know, when it comes to the township, those officials out there, they're very strong, and they do a wonderful job out there. Right, Barry? We have another trustee here today, so. He won't disagree. I think he's a little bit scared of them, so. I know I am.
Mr. clerk?
Today at eleven, we'll have our tid meeting. Next commissioners' meeting will be Wednesday, January 22nd at nine thirty. And then also, I forgot, Tuesday, the Stormwater will meet at eleven, the 21st.
Tuesday, the 21st of Stormwater.
And at what time it said?
Eleven.
Eleven. Did we get the notification out to the township?
Next Tuesday.
About that?
About what?
I'm just letting you know that we were going to be discussing possible fee increases and that at that meeting.
You can do whatever you want with that. That's a Stormwater Districts issue.
Well, at the last meeting, we said that we were going to send out a notification to them.
The...
Did we actually send a notification out?
I don't believe we sent anything to them. Did we send, did we have a meeting to them, or?
Honestly, you, you're supposed to take care of that, but that's okay.
I, I, well, my answer is no, we didn't.
Unless done in the meantime for both of us, I don't know.
I'll, I'll have to find out. There's a lot going out on Stormwater, and there's been a lot going out on SWAC.
You had a lot on your plate, too, so.
Yeah, I, the...
Tuesday, the 21st at eleven. Yes.
I haven't even looked at Stormwater issues yet, so we got until the 21st.
Yeah. Could you send that out to Patty Echo and just let her know and Amy?
That we're meeting?
That we're meeting.
Discussion will take place.
And then they'll forward it on to all the members.
Word correspondence?
Will the reading be waived?
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I think we only have employees.
Ann Carlisle Township.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to go on executive session as outlined by the county administrator.
Second. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.